I just take, take your, take your name away. Okay, I think we're ready. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the meeting tonight for the Pecosin Planning Commission, Thursday, January 23rd, and at this time, we will call this meeting to order, and Vice Chair, Angie Emmett, will offer the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
And for the invocation, if you'd like to join us, we'll do the Lord's Prayer, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread.
Our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, cross from evil, for thine is the kingdom, power, and glory forever. Amen.
That's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one individual, liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you, Angie. The next item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes for the work session, December 2nd, 2019. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
Go move.
Motion to second.
Second.
Who, who made the motion?
I made, I made the motion.
Bill, and then Greg, second. All right. Okay, y'all, let's go ahead and vote on that.
Okay. Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Dever?
Aye.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of five, two, one extension.
Thank you, Karen. And motion to accept the regular session minutes for December 2nd, 2019. Do you have a motion to accept those as written?
Make a motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right, Karen.
Emmett?
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Dever?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of five, two, one extension.
This time, we'll open the audience for visitors, and if you have something that you would like to address the Planning Commission about, other than the public hearing items on the agenda, if you would like to come forward, give us your name and address, so Karen can have that in the record.
My name's Steve Robinson. I live at 54 South Innis Road, in Pecosin. Mama, her sisters, all went to school over here in the twenties and thirties. I've been around for a few years. I'd like to thank Mrs. Emmett for responding to my email back in November regarding all these political signs out here on With Creek Road. I came in tonight cold, listening to all discussing about sign owners. I did not have a problem with most signs, whether it's real estate, putting an open house, or whatever. I think Pecosin's outstanding in this. I travel constantly. Coming down, I should have took pictures. But we all see it on With Creek Road. It seemed like there's a political campaign contest who can have the most signs out there. And I vote for Trump, but I don't need 500 Trump signs out there, just one. That's the way I look at it. I've seen several close accidents. People trying to come off Victory, come down With Creek, and one person's trying to pull in the food line, another person ain't paying attention, because you can't even hardly see the entrance into food line. For all the signs, they're so close, they're just jammed up. I don't see that in York County. I don't see it in Williamsburg, New Bernou, Hampton. I don't even see it in Virginia Beach in my travels. I think y'all got a tough job. I really do. Just listening to you tonight, I think you have a tough job. A lot of you made some real, that was spoke, had good sense on many different things regarding signs. And I listened to a few that I think had very serious regard for public safety. With these political signs, no. There's too many. You don't see nobody else do that. With Creek Road is the main thoroughfare, Little Florida, and Victory is the main thoroughfare through Pecosin. We have a lot of visitors coming here. They try to pull into 7-Eleven, go get gas, and somebody's getting ready to bump them in the butt in the car, because they're not paying attention. You can't see entrances. My thing is, is I feel what you've been proposing on signs is good. I ain't got a problem with that. But these political signs, get the city attorney involved. Limit how many they can be put out there. I don't need a presidential candidate having 50 to 100 signs out there. They only need two or three is enough on television. And it distracts from the beauty of our city. To me, it's not a city, it's a nice town. That's the way the folks are. But it distracts from us. Seafood Festival, I ain't had no problem with no signs. The civic groups putting signs out for their fundraisers and stuff, well, guess what? I'm with Pecosin Sonic Lodge, and we have a couple signs, we get the permits. But every dollar we make, we put back into this city, into the citizens, in our schools, and not through taxes or nothing here. We physically take care of them. And I'd hate to see us get littered, you know, because we don't do many signs. All I'm asking is for you to come up with some solution, because I'm gonna be bending my councilman's ears on reducing by at least 50% these, these campaign signs on city right of way. I ain't got a problem with what you put on public property. You can put anything out there you want. I know the Sheriff Diggs, when he was running, most all his signs was on public, I mean, on private property, which I liked. Well, if these candidates running for Senate, and House, and delegates, and the presidents, they can do the same thing. We don't need our road littered. That's just my thoughts and my feelings. So, that's what I've got. I'm just looking for you, and I'm asking for you to do something about reducing these political signs. All the other signs I'm happy with, that's just nutshell. I ain't never had a problem with what y'all have done and how things are. The Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, Little League, all that, you know, car washes by the students and organizations, I think it's great. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Ms. Emmett.
Thank you.
I got a letter from him, so I didn't know anything about a letter. Sorry, I never got your letter. And I'm, I'm the chairman, I never got your letter. I probably would have talked to you, but I didn't get your letter.
Now, I went to your costume.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Huh?
I went to Gloucester.
Gloucester? Oh, I hate to hear that.
I wish I had it, but I'm sorry. I mean, we'll, we'll certainly, we appreciate you coming and telling us how you feel. Thank you. Thank you.
If you taught here, you taught my children and all.
I have never taught anywhere. This man here was teaching when I was in school, right here. Mr. Kimzie.
I wonder if I met him somewhere. He's been down to Paris Island checking out the Marines for his troops.
He was a very young man when I was, when he was teaching at school when I was in. He was a baby.
When I went to high school at York, this was no high, I couldn't do nothing wrong. I'd get caught, because all my mama's friends, they all went to school together at Pecosin High School. They were in charge of the front office. I had two teachers that taught my mama, and you let me do one thing wrong, she got a phone call.
That's what happened. It used to happen, that's for sure. Well, we know how that was.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I think you took my time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Fred Kimzie. I'm here to represent the Pecosin Education Foundation, along with the Pecosin Quanons Club, along with this following message. It's very important that it's worded out, because sometimes the people in town, not wanting to put a penny out about different things going on here. What I'm doing here, this is what I go around town a lot doing on Sunday morning, like you was sleeping, putting on your cars and your paper. All I want to know is where can I put the signs? In the past, you come up to City Hall, you would fill out a form, and they said, okay, you don't owe us any money, because it's a fundraising for the Quanons Club, or Pecosin Education Foundation. Both of them are very good. I went to York County, I put a sign up in York County, right on the Carrie Chapel and Victory Boulevard. Nice, I mean, it was a nice sign. It said, "Support Pecosin Education." Wonderful sign. Somebody took my sign, York County. Finally, I got over Sheriff Diggs. Luckily, I taught Sheriff Diggs, not much. And I said, "Sheriff Diggs," he said, "Mr. Kimzie, I'll check on it for you." Got a phone call back, and they found out who took the sign. It was York County, because I was on the right of way. They had to remove at least four screws to get that sign off that area. So I went up there, and I got up there, and their rule is this. If you have a sign, and they take it, because you were in the wrong place, you go up there, and you sign the affidavit saying, "I will not do it again. I signed my name to it," and they gave my sign back to me. Okay, that's York County. I hope Pecosin doesn't get like that. All I want to know is, where can I put these signs for the Pecosin Education Foundation, and for the boat show on March 21st, and you have a copy of what's going on here? It's, it's hard to get word out. And if you restrict signs, and I'm not against restricting signs, it's hard to get the word out. I have a solution here. You always come to see your boss, and you say, "Boss, here's the problem. Here's the solution to it. Two electronic signs. One out here on Victory, and one going in town by the bridge. Electronic signs you can see. The sign out there now, I don't see very well, but I can't see it." Okay? That's my solution, what's going on. I invite all y'all to come to the Quanons Boating, Fishing, and Nautical Art with Jewelry, all right, on the 21st of March. Do you have any questions for me? I guess I covered everything, right?
Yes, I think you did. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did I need to stay, or can I leave?
I, I think.
So you, y'all, y'all, you all will give a copy if I go up there, if, maybe y'all adopt where the right of way is. Because I don't want to be chasing signs down, and being caught, and, you know, misdemeanor, I have to go to court, and so forth. I appreciate your time, appreciate your hard work. Let's go, boss.
I have a question, Fred, before you leave. What is your feeling about the proposed 20-foot setback for, for larger signs on Victory Boulevard, which is proposed? Did you hear the proposal?
Well, with, most people have them sitting back, at least 15 feet to start with. 20 means you make the sign bigger. Right now, they're four-by-fours.
That's the point.
Take a sheet of plywood, cut in half, got a four-by-four, you got a sign. If you put it further back, because I know what Sheriff Diggs did, he put it on private property. It was not in the right of way, like I did. Not in the way. Okay? So, what his question was?
Question is, with a 20-foot setback on, on Victory Boulevard, the signs can be any, any size?
20 foot, 15 foot. I'm 15 foot back, so I'm standing there with my Gordon Fisherman's outfit, and the little fish hanging over the side waving to people. And what we need to do, if you ever get a chance, go up to Carrie's Chapel, and With Creek Road. Stand there at 4 o'clock, with fishing, like this, I was fishing, you know, having my sign, waving to people. That is the most dangerous place.
It's terrible.
It's scary.
Yeah.
I was there about five minutes, I said, "Fred, you better leave, because an accident could say that man there waving that fish is distracting me." That's the most dangerous place it is.
It is.
Anything else you want to know? Thanks a lot, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I'm a little bit, we're a little bit out of our order, but that's, that's okay. I'm gonna close the audience for visitors. If nobody wants to talk on anymore. We kinda got a little astray there, and got into our public hearings, but we will, we'll open though. If you have any further comments on signs, we can do it. In fact, what we're kinda thinking about here is maybe on the public hearings tonight, since we have had, have had a lot of discussion in the work session about the amendments to the, to the city code for the signs in the public right of way, which is the fourth thing on our public hearing. It's the amendments to the city code pertaining, pertaining to Chapter 6, Article 4, signs in the public right of way. We're kinda thinking, maybe if y'all may have an interest in doing so, that maybe we will move this to the first public hearing, since we have now kinda gotten into it a little bit with the, I mean, that would be something we'd have to have a motion to do, and a second vote on it. So.
I'll make a motion to move Item 4 of the public hearing to Item 1 for this evening.
Second?
I'll second.
Aye.
Gribble?
Aye.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, and with that said, we're gonna be doing, one is two, two is three, and three will be four. We kinda got into that a little bit in the audience for visitors, so we'll carry it over now into, I guess we'll have a presentation in the, no, no presentation. We've had a presentation in the work session, we have, and we feel fully, fully immersed. So, I guess we need to have some discussion. We had, we had a lot of discussion at the work session, and there were some things that were, I think narrowing it down, we have, we have some concerns that were brought forth. We don't, I think we don't want to limit, as Mr. Kimzie said, we wouldn't want to limit, I guess, some of our, I, will, will the, will it stay the same, what we are looking at for our organizations like the Quanons Club and the Masons? He said they're not paying now for their sign. Is that, clarify a little bit where he was mentioning?
The city's policy, I think, is for a lot of nonprofits. I think we do go without a charge for a lot of the civic organizations. We're not able to regulate the content, at least not legally, on signs. So, it's hard in the ordinance, if not impossible, to separate one, one kind of sign from another. But to Mr. Mr. Kimzie's question, as to what he would be able to do, as I indicated earlier, under the current ordinance, we've sort of been saying, approved in accordance with our practice. Please be aware that, I'm paraphrasing here, but please be aware that we're looking at changes, and this may not be allowable next year, or at least not in the same way. What Mr. Kimzie could do now, if this ordinance was passed, as it is, and I know there's some questions about it, but let's just take that. If it was passed as is, he would be able to do a larger sign, but he'd have to be 20 feet back from the right of way, and he would have to get a permit. Who ends up paying for it, you know, that's, that's determined elsewhere, with the Finance Department or whatever. But I guess you could make an argument that we're giving preferential treatment to one type of sign over another, just on charge. I'm gonna leave that alone. Just from a zoning standpoint, that's what he'd have to do.
That would affect him, as of right now?
Correct.
Okay. Another concern, of course, is the one that's been mentioned, about the numbers of signs, political signs. Now, I was thinking that Mr. Mullins would have to, we would probably have to have some legal guidance on that. I'm not sure. You know, that's kinda, is that kind of a difficult situation, and limiting numbers of signs? I don't know. I can, I can appreciate that at times, it's, it's overwhelming to see all of the signs, and thank goodness, we don't have to see them all the time like that, because I think it would be a nuisance. But what, what would you say concerning that? I mean, we wouldn't want to be violation of anything there that, or accused of, I guess, being preferential for one candidate over another, if.
I, I think from a legal standpoint, you can certainly limit the number of signs, however you all choose to. Wally pointed out during the work session, it's the content that you cannot regulate.
Mm-hmm.
Because that becomes a constitution. Certainly regulate how many signs can be put up. Now, you know, Danan and Wally hinted at enforcement of that, or, you know, possible workarounds to however you phrase it, but you certainly, from a legal standpoint, have the ability to, to make that limitation, should you choose to.
Okay, so that, that's good. That kinda clarifies that we didn't do that in the work session, so thank you. Thank you, Angie.
That's where you could, you would not be able to do it.
You're not able to.
You can't, you can't.
You can't specify that it, political signs are limited, because that's regulating based on the content, and so you can't.
How do you do it?
How do you regulate?
You would have to make it as a general regulation.
Would have to be for everything.
Can I have more than five signs under one permit within a period of time?
Correct.
You can't, you can't distinguish between political signs and any other, because that is the content. So that, that clarifies that.
It would have to be a general rule for all signs.
Yes. Okay. That clarifies that.
And if political signs are considered temporary, are they not?
Well, they're more than, more than 24 hours.
Basically, all of the signs that are allowed in the right of way, that are temporary signs. You know.
30 days. Yeah. Then you get in, we get into, we, we've kinda got that defined legally, and then we get into the situation that we discussed, where Commissioner Gribble brought up, about the directional signs. These seem to be the issues, and I'm sort of just, I'm trying to pinpoint what we're dealing with here, because what I heard was the issue of the directional signs. She has some issues with that. And if you'd like to just mention that.
I just don't think a directional sign is hazard. I think it's an aid to someone who is looking for an event that has been, whether it be advertised, or whether it's a private party, or whatever the case may be. If I'm driving down With Creek Road, and I see a red directional sign, and I know that I'm following these red directional signs, and I have to put that sign back by Alpha Street to be 200 feet back from the intersection, I'm gonna be turning down Alpha Street. I'm lost. So I think, in some ways, that would create more of a hazard than it would be if it were sitting there in the right of way, and it's less than 24 hours. I think for temporary directional signs to be allowed within the 100 feet, but less than 24 hour. My recommendation for that type of sign, because not only is it for real estate, but it's for on our public, like this event that Fred Kimzie's got coming off. I mean, it's on Odd Road. Well, if someone's coming in, they don't know where Pecosin's High School is. It would be nice to be able to put a red directional sign there that points down Little Florida Road to get to Odd Road. So I think that it's, it's an aid to, rather than creating hazard, I think it's, it's less of a hazard than somebody breaking it because they have no clue.
So that's.
And of course, most of those signs would need to be on, in the city right of way. The, this ordinance pertains not to private signs in private yards, it's simply to public right of way. But directional signs, most often, as you say, would have to be in the public right of way, because they're indicating people to go to private areas, so that you don't have much choice as to where you would put directional signs. Now, you're saying, you said limit those to 24 hours in the work session.
And if it's a temporary sign like, like that, that's a 24 hours, well, first of all, I don't think you should have to have a permit, and secondly, I think it should be allowed to put it within the right of way, and it be removed within 24 hours. I mean, most people put them up at noon, or 1 o'clock, and when they leave at 4, the sign comes up. It's not something that stays even.
But we are, are living in, I guess, an era of people now, if they're trying to find directions or something.
Everybody is on GPS, just so you know. I mean, this is.
And a lot of people just like to see that sign. They, they like that sign that's pointing, having been to a number of things, and, you know, I think you just do.
Red directional's on their phones. I mean, a lot of people just have a, a regular phone. I mean, not everybody.
All right. So that, the, Wally is kinda trying to get us to, to come to some, some, something that we can give him as guidance. So I'm trying to narrow it down as to the issues. So the issues that we face are numbers of signs, which.
Again, if I may, if I may, to object, I don't think it's numbers of signs. I think it is the congestion of signs.
Yeah.
And I think there's a big difference. I don't want to say you could only have five political signs, but I do want to say they can be only so close together. That's the issue, in my opinion.
Yeah, and then, and then we get into the issue, which I, I know with Wally and Danan, exactly what they were talking about, the issue of enforcement.
Yeah, but you.
That may be, that may be where you have a problem. I don't know.
If, if we're not gonna enforce it, then why have it to begin with?
Right. That's right.
Why have a code to begin with?
We have measured every sign, and every time the signs go up.
Why have any kind of code to begin with, if you're not gonna enforce it?
Two, two things. I think what Ms. Gribble was talking about, we just handle with the signs permitted without a permit. Would be 24 hour directional signs. That gets you out of the 100, or 200, or whatever it is, prohibition around intersection, because that's only for signs that require a permit, okay? That gets you around that. That's one idea. The other idea was what y'all just talked about. I think you've got to address the number of political signs, if you're going to address the distance. Otherwise, if you don't address the number, you could have a lot of people in. you could have a lot coming in for a lot of different signs and there's just not enough space in the right of way to enforce any sort of distance requirement. So I mean, I think the two are going to have to go hand in hand.
You have to. I think you're exactly right. Because like I say, you may have, in a political campaign, you may have a dozen people come in and, you know, each one of them is going to put their 10 signs so many, you know, inches or whatever apart. You know, it seems like you would have to kind of put something number wise. To me, it does.
That in York County, and I see it in Hampton, just like I see it here in Pecosin. But I don't know what York County sign ordinance is. Do we know how they limit those things? Do we know how James...
Apparently, they just take them down to listen to Mr. Kinsey.
That's what Brett said. They just go pull them up.
They took it up.
But I just wonder about the other localities. I mean, what type of sign ordinances do they have to restrict this political...
I would say this about political signs. Many counties and cities have not addressed the political sign issue. That doesn't mean we want to copy them because their sign ordinance has not been modernized to reflect some of the court decisions. I was under the impression when I started this that we were really the only place that was allowing signs in the right of way. That may or may not be true. I don't know. I don't know how everybody else treats them, but we have to be a little bit careful to copy someone else's requirements because most sign ordinances are outdated. I mean, that's just the bottom line. Trying to get ours in date, if you will. It sounds like York County's got all kinds of...
A lot of public works to go around and pull signs, apparently.
Full signs are...
Apparently, yeah, apparently.
I seem to remember looking into neighboring counties and city sign ordinances, and most of them do not allow signs in the right of way. The difference being, most of these other localities have people whose job it is to wander around the city and periodically pick up signs. Pecosin doesn't do that because we're so small.
And it would hurt some of the organizations, like, you know, cheerleaders.
So we've chosen to allow that policy.
Yeah, some of our people that we don't want to limit. It's a double-edged sword because, you know, you don't want to hurt organizations that do good in your community and penalize them if they're having an event, but...
I certainly agree with you. And I see their sign all the time. Well, at the end of Old Yorktown Road and at Huntsneck where I live, and it's on a private fence. You know, it's not a right of way. It's a big old sign, but it's a fence. It's 20 feet off the street. You look right at it, right next to the Education Foundation.
But the next property owner may decide, uh-uh, you can't put that on...
Well, it's up to them, but you know...
Well, the point I mean, you're saying, yeah, it's there and it's off, it's on private property, but not everybody wants to have signs placed on private property either. And so...
Well, I get it. You know, I think the real problem is, we've been talking about this for 90 minutes and we have nothing concrete to talk about.
Well, we've got a little bit better because Wally's working on her, working on your problem. And that kind of, that kind of clears up...
We can look at the numbers, which, and...
Yeah, yeah.
We talked to Andy about that. The last thing to decide is some guidance on the 100-foot, 200-foot, 300-foot, whatever, from the intersections. That's really the last major question that we have.
Yeah, that's three things that we sort of...
If you tried to limit the signs, what would prevent somebody from coming in? Like, I go in and I buy 10 signs for the candidate I'm supporting and my neighbor goes by, has 10 signs. Before you know it, got 100...
That's why you have to address numbers if you're going to look at distance.
That's why.
You can't do one absent of the other.
It has to be the numbers and it would have to pertain to all because we can't, we can't...
You're still going to have a mess of signs. You're just not going to have them 100 feet or 200 feet within the intersection.
You still gonna have signs.
That's the bottom line. They're still going to be there.
If you limit the quantity per application, then I still think, and it's not going to be a complete deterrent. And I think that civic organizations, they're not going out and putting up 30 signs around town for their things. They're putting a handful in strategic places. And like I say, I think it's just an extra hurdle. It might be a slight deterrent. It might be something if I need to go and apply and then Lee needs to go to apply. And then, you know, and it goes down and just, you have to pay the fee each time. You have to fill out the paperwork. You have to do it. And it might, you know, just be an extra little hurdle to prevent just one person with a truckload of signs going down the road, just taking them in every few feet.
Well, what would be a number that would be, what would be a number you would throw out there as to the limit? Now, one thing too, you get into, have you want to really get into another thing? How about on the day of the election, when you go to the polling place, got all those signs out there then? I mean, you know, you got that too. So throw that into the mix.
Well, again, that's a...
You can't stop there?
You're in violation.
They would be in violation. Yeah, they would be.
But if they're under 24 hours in the attempt, we're...
If it's under 24 hours, then we've got to...
That would take care of the campaign signs right there at the...
24 hours, so there you go. But what would be the number in the public right of ways for 30 days? I mean, what number would you say to limit?
I'll say again, I think number is the wrong direction to go. We have hundreds of miles of road. I think it is proximity, the distance between similar signs.
But now, how would you, how would you support that after we've mentioned that, say, 20 people could come in and get...
If it's a distance between similar signs, I don't care who puts it up. If, let's just take Mugler for a minute, and I'm not picking on her, but just as an example. If she can't have a sign any more than 500 feet from a next Mugler sign on With Creek Road, I don't care who put it up. But you've got the signs spread out over something reasonable. You know, to come up and say you can have, you can only have 50 signs, well, they could put 50 in With Creek or you could put 50 out there at Messick Point. And they're still in Pecosin. I think trying to do numbers is the wrong direction. The issue that we've seen, you saw an email, I saw an email, I saw the complaints about, is proximity. And I think that's what we have to address, in my opinion. Not just my opinion.
So not the numbers? So we could have 500 signs from the New Bridge to 200 feet from the intersection. We could have 500 political signs?
No, not, well...
I mean, theoretically, you could.
It depends on your proximity. Again, what is your answer?
Well, again, who's going to enforce that though, Bill?
Well, who's going to enforce anything? You know? Who's going to enforce 24 hours? Who's going to enforce anything?
It's an unreasonable expectation of enforcement for that.
The problem with distance alone is this. If somebody, some candidate comes in, let's just say Martha Mugler comes in and she's got all these signs going up and down With Creek Road. We've said you can't do another sign within 15 feet. Somebody, some candidate is being disenfranchised from being able to advertise their candidacy. That's the problem that you have with it.
I get, I just don't see that, but...
I mean, the whole Mugler signs were right on top of each other. Forget 15 feet. They were like 5 inches from each other.
You're limiting the distance between the same sign and that, I think, will clutter the number of signs. So if you think of it in terms of distance between like signs, I don't think you're going to have the clutter.
I think we've got to reduce the number of signs to, in order to get to there. I don't see how the geometry works out otherwise. I don't, but...
Okay.
I am not supposed to argue and I'm not going to.
No, no. And we're just trying to clarify the issues. Now, it sounds like to me that this one, are we thinking tonight that we want to vote on this? Or do we want it to go back and be tweaked again? I mean, I don't know.
I've got to tell you, I guess it's not fair free to say because I won't be here. But I don't see anything concrete that I could vote on, me.
Okay, but...
Well, I shouldn't say anything. I don't see enough concrete.
On this, on this one, uh-huh.
Some items I could be happy with, some items I just...
Well, let's move along then unless somebody either make a motion to accept this as written or to postpone it or, what is your direction here?
I'll take a motion to have it postponed and let Wally and Danan work on it. After hearing all the comments that have been made here today and bring it back.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Karen, take the vote.
Okay. Commissioner...
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Grebel?
Aye.
Commissioner Dever?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreit?
Aye, I'm not going to say no. Okay, all right. With that said, I hope you've kind of narrowed it down to the three.
You have, you have.
Okay, all right. And now we can, we can move on and we'll look forward to this next time. You know, we'll...
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. We're going to go on to the next, the second item on the public hearings tonight, which is a request by Fountains of Pecosin LLC to amend the terms of a rezoning approval for property known as Zero, I guess, or O, is that a zero? With Creek Road, Pecosin Tax Map Parcels numbers 27-9-2 and 27-18-2. Wally's going to give us a presentation.
I will as soon as I get it up. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Moses for wading through that.
Thank you, yes, Mr. Moses.
Nice conversation on signage.
Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
We're not that entertaining, I don't, but anyway. That's a good compliment, thank you. Okay. Three different requests here from Fountains of Pecosin. Mr. Moses is representing Fountains. I guess he is Fountains, but...
And are you going to give all of the, are you going to just go ahead and do it all at once?
I can do it all at once.
I mean, would that be okay? Wally's up there, go ahead. That's what I was thinking.
There's going to be a certain amount of bleed over, so...
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
And that'll allow me to kind of cut to the chase in some ways.
All right, that sounds good.
We did advertise this for the public hearing before the planning commission on January 3 and January 10 in the Daily Press. As I said before, there are three requests. The first request is a rezoning amendment to rezoning number 4047. That was the resolution number. Fountains has provided a new exhibit. Staffs made some comments on them. And Mr. Moses and Fountains have proposed altered conditions. Staffs commented on those. I included in your packet comments on the Phase 3 site plan review. I'm not really going to cover that tonight, but I just gave that to you as some background. The second thing is conditional use permit amendment to number 4048, which pertains to Phase 3 and Phase 4. What Mr. Moses and Fountains is wanting to do now is to break out Phase 3 from Phase 4. So we're essentially amending the conditional use permit that included both Phase 3 and Phase 4. And then we're doing a new conditional use permit for Phase 4. So, and I'll have the proposed altered conditions and the new proposed conditions as well. That's a mouthful. Okay. All right, beginning with the rezoning, location. This really, the area that starred there, those two properties, let me see if this thing's working. Uh-oh, it's working too well. But anyway, you can see the star on there. That's really what we're talking about with the rezoning. The original rezoning was for those two parcels. They went from B2 to Village Commercial back in, I think, 2016, what? Am I remembering that right? Okay, so, you know, here's the zoning, Phase 1 and Phase 2. You can kind of see up there in the top, Phase 3. And then Phase 4 is across from the EDA property, which is a pond. And you'll be able to see that on aerial here. That's the EDA Pond. Phase 4 is right there. Phase 3 is there. Proposed exhibit for this rezoning amendment dated 12/16/19 shows the buildings, shows Phase 1, which has been built. Dag gummit, man. All right, yeah, that's been built. So there's two buildings in Phase 2 yet to be built. Three buildings in Phase 3. The current rezoning has them being mixed use. Well, except for building number 6, the one furthest to the south. That one right there, you can barely see this dot, but anyway. That one's still going to be a completely commercial building. Buildings 4 and 5, 4 and 5 are going to become residential, exclusively residential buildings. Prior to this point, they were commercial on the ground floor and residential on the second and third floor. What he's doing essentially, what Mr. Moses is doing is he's transferring some of the commercial out of this phase and putting it up into Phase 4 along with some residential. So Phase 4, in the first iteration with the first rezoning, which we're amending here tonight or proposing to, Phase 4 was all residential. Now it's not. You basically have a 2 to 1 ratio of residential to commercial in Phase 3 and in Phase 4. So that's the main difference there. This is a table for inclusion on the exhibit. They largely did a lot of this, but I was able to glean some of it off of looking at prior approved site plans and just basically counting parking spaces. The bottom line is, over the whole development, they're going to have enough parking. I think that's the essential, the essential thing to take home from that. I've broken out Phase 3 and Phase 4 and then I looked at the entire development and that's how I calculated the parking. Okay. Previous rezoning plan approved September 12, 2016. I just put this in here for reference. You can see some of the differences. You see, for example, that Phase 4 is all residential units. And Phase 4 and 5, I think it's broken down like on page 1, the difference between the buildings in 4, 5, and 6. Bottom line is, I think the main thing to take out of all this is that he is now proposing a 2 to 1 ratio of commercial, of residential to commercial over both the phases. So each phase stands on its own. Whereas before, they were tied together because they were interrelated in meeting that 66.667 whatever percentage of residential.
What was the ratio? I'm sorry.
It's 2 to 1 residential to commercial.
And, but what was it?
It's still, it's still 2 to 1. He's just doing a different way of doing it.
Okay.
You know, where he had all this commercial in Phase 3 and all residential in Phase 4. Now what he's doing, let me go back to that exhibit. Now what he's doing is, you'll see, and my point is just, that's commercial, that's residential, that's commercial, and those two buildings will be solely residential.
So 4 and 5 will be commercial?
4 and 5 will be residential.
Will be residential. And 3 is going to be?
3, no, building 6, that one down here, that will be all commercial.
That will be all commercial?
Yeah, in Phase 3, yes, sir.
It was originally going to be what? It was originally intended to be residential or commercial?
Well, initially, this was going to be commercial downstairs and residential on the next two floors.
On 4 and 5? On 4 and 5, you're saying?
On 4 and 5.
Okay, it was going to be commercial on the bottom, residential on top?
But now it's going to be solely residential.
Solely residential. And number 6?
And 6 is still going to remain commercial.
Will remain commercial. So we're doing away with, okay, commercial on the...
We're taking his commercial density from here and we're putting it into Phase 4. 4. He's still meeting the requirements.
In Phase 4?
Right.
Is there room for that in Phase 4?
Phase 4 was all residential at first.
Is there room for commercial? Is there room for commercial in Phase 4?
Well, that's commercial up front, that's what he's got.
I can't see your pointer, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you, you, we can't, we can't see your pointer, Wally, it doesn't, it doesn't show.
My pointer sucks, basically, but, um, but anyway, yeah.
Looking at Phase 4 at the top there, right?
You're looking at Phase 4 on the top, the first, the first two units are.
9, 10, 11 are all commercial?
Yes. The ones to the rear.
But be commercial though now, right?
No.
9, 10, 11.
7 and 8, okay, okay, these are gonna be commercial.
Okay, yeah, I might have misspoke there, I can't read this, it's very small, isn't it? Anyway, the bottom line is, he's gonna meet his percentage requirements, okay? That's, that's the main takeaway I wanted to get across there. But it is a different method by which he's doing it than he had the first time around. Okay, I already said the parking was okay. Okay, below, or what I'm gonna cover here, shouldn't have said below. Okay, the current wording of rezoning 4047, approved in September, September 12th, 2006, with proposed changes are indicated, okay? Strike-throughs indicate language proposed for elimination, underlined text indicates proposed new language, and this is from the Fountains, okay? The first condition, the layout of any development of the site shall generally adhere to the conceptual plan dated December 19th, 2019, references the exhibit. The proposed language from Fountains, Mr. Moses simply updates the layout information. So there's really not a whole, whole lot to say about that, it needs to be updated because it's a new exhibit. At no time shall the development in its entirety exceed 9 units per acre, I knew I said something about that on the phase, on the site plan for Phase 3, if y'all looked at that, but based on what I'm looking at here, it looks like he's going to continue to meet this requirement. Okay, number 3 is a proposed change. Instead of prior to site plan approval, the language is prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, a boundary line adjustment plan must be prepared and recorded, vacate and all property lines dividing the properties in question. The issue staff has with this is that a boundary line adjustment needs to be done at the time of site plan approval. We simply have no way to approve a site plan that has building straddling property lines. I mean, the setback can be, you know, whatever, and we'll look at it for that, but, but you can't, you can't obtain site plan approval for a building that's straddling property lines. Just said the same thing again, sorry. And the exhibit shows the property lines to be vacated, they're very faint, and if I tried to point them out, you probably wouldn't be able to see the red dot, but, anyway, staff would recommend no change to the current condition, based on the fact that it's really site plan that governs that type of thing, not, not the certificate of occupancy. All development located 200 feet or closer to With Creek Road shall be reserved for only commercial use, no changes proposed to that. Setbacks on With Creek Road and adjacent properties not zoned Village Commercial shall be consistent with the requirements of the B2 Business Commercial Zoning District. I saw the way that's worded, and I think my staff comment is wrong, no changes proposed, the entire fountain development is zoned Village Commercial, but this condition, the way he's got it written, it's fine, it doesn't need to indicate VC zoning, the way he's got it is fine. Okay, this is the biggie. Phase 4, well, let me read what it did say. Phase 4, the townhome site shall in those circumstances be constructed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy on the commercial structure located in Phase 3, as depicted on, and this would be the previous conceptual plan dated March 17th, 2016, titled rezoning plan, Phase 3, Phase 3 and Phase 4, the Fountains of Virginia, a mixed, a village mixed use. Development, basically, that's what it said then, what he wants to change it to is Phase 4 may be constructed separately and independently of Phase 3, provided Phase 4 meets its ratios via CUP and ordinance. I've already told you that it beats its ratio, so it does. However, while staff feels that a separation of the two phases with independent ratios being met makes some sense, and it does, it is nevertheless important to keep parts of the current provision intact to preserve some guarantee that the city will see commercial units prior to the entirety of residential units being built over Phases 3 and Phases 4. What I mean to say by that is that obviously there is residential that's in Phase 3, and there's residential in Phase 4, there's also commercial in Phase 3, there's also commercial in Phase 4. Albeit a different plan and a different way of allocating it, the city still wants to see some commercial units. In other words, we wouldn't want to see residential built in Phase 3 and Phase 4, and, and then the commercial is either greatly delayed or never comes at all, okay? Now, Mr. Moses has some concerns with this, and I think he'll talk to you tonight about some potential alternatives. Staff had two recommendations, two versions of the same recommendation, how about that? Both of these are less stringent than the previous one, but anyway, the, the first condition, or first version of the condition would be residential buildings may be constructed and occupied prior to construction of commercial buildings. Have no problem with that within each phase. Phase 3, the residential can come first, commercial second. However, this shall be confined to building within each phase, which is kind of what I just said. Each phase must be built out prior to construction on another phase being allowed to commence. Now, the order of development would be construction of Phase 2, certificate of occupancy for all buildings within the phase, second would come construction of Phase 3, and certificates of occupancy for all buildings within the phase, and then you'd have Phase 4, construction of Phase 4, and certificates of occupancy for all buildings within the phase. In other words, it would be an orderly transition from phase to phase. I would even go so far as to say, construction of Phase 3, as long as all the buildings were built for the commercial structure, you know, we could probably talk about maybe not even requiring a certificate of occupies, occupancy for that, as long as the building was built. But, anyway, this is, this is an attempt to kind of tread the, the middle ground between what he had and what he, what he wants now, that's what I tried to do. Another version of the same condition, and I put in both of these since I kind of tweaked the staff report a little bit, I didn't, it's, it's a little more straightforward. Phase 4 may be constructed separately and independently of Phase 3, provided Phase 4, sorry about the lack of Roman numerals there, meets its ratios via CUP and ordinance, which it does. However, in those circumstances, shall construction in Phase 4 commence prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy on a commercial structure, building 6, located in Phase 3, as depicted on the exhibit, which is, it's building number 6 in Phase 3. Again, you know, I know Mr. Moses is gonna talk to you about that, that's one that gives him particular heartburn, I believe. Approval of this rezoning request does not constitute site plan approval, he's aware of that, he knows the site plan is improved, I don't see any issue with that, no changes proposed. Staff did conduct a review, as I mentioned earlier, of the Phase 3 site plans, courtesy review, and sent comments to the applicant and his engineer on 12/13/19, probably didn't see him till over the weekend, because that was a, was that a Friday? I don't know, anyway, losing track here. Identified in these comments are several items that will need to be satisfied prior to approval of that site plan. Now, that site plan was based in part upon this rezoning amendment being approved and what I'll talk about with the Phase 3 conditions being approved, so, I'll keep going, but I'll try to truncate from here on out. Okay, I'm talking about Phase 3 now, this is the conditional use permit amendment. Okay, Phase 3, we're still talking about the same property that we're talking about in the rezoning. The 50-foot portion of the property that was required, and I might need a map for this, because I can talk to it better than I can, let me see here. You'll see on this plan, up to where Phase 4 is, is that there is an extension of Alpha Street involved, okay? What he wants to do is put that off essentially until Phase 4. I will say that there's no part of the road that's going to be needed for Phase 3. We do have the ordinance requirement 11-3.2D that says that where you have residential separate from commercial, which is gonna be the case here, that all the required infrastructure to include ingress, egress, stormwater features, and all necessary utilities need to be done prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy for buildings on the site. Therefore, unless the applicant is specifically granted the ability to design and build the Alpha Street extension as part of the Phase 4 conditional use, which we'll get to in a minute, conditional use permit, the road must be designed and built as part of Phase 3, prior to any certificate of occupancy being granted for that phase, that phase being Phase 3. So, he's proposing to basically delay it.
What, I'm sorry?
He's, he's proposing to delay the construction, the design and construction of the road until he gets to Phase 4, which, under the ordinance, is somewhat problematic, but after talking this over, we feel that if they, if specifically it's carried on as a condition of Phase 4, we're okay. Because remember, Phase 3 and Phase 4 are gonna be somewhat separate, gonna be two site plans. Okay, does that make sense?
Hard time hearing you.
Okay, well.
I have to get close to that mic.
Wish I'd known that was a problem earlier, I'm sorry about that, I'll try to talk into the mic. Proposed change, number 2, approval of the Architectural Review Board shall be required on all buildings, including the residential component, prior to site plan approval, no changes proposed, condition will be enforced as part of the site plan review. Oh, sorry. Number 3, if the project is not constructed and fully operational within five years of the issuance of this permit, the conditional use permit shall become null and void. The effect of this amendment will be to give Mr. Moses and the Fountains five years from the date of that conditional use permit amendment approval, so that will essentially reset the clock.
Reset the clock a year ago?
We reset the clock for Phase 2, which has already been approved as a site plan. The City Council actually gave the direction to try to look at ways to, to see if Mr. Moses needed to extend his permit on this, this amendment will do that, that, that will accomplish it. Again, I've already talked about the nine units, looks like he's gonna be fine there. All conditions cited within a conditional use permit dated May 14th, 2012, and amended whenever this is approved, if approved, shall be adhered to, kind of goes without saying. Update to the approval date of this amendment if granted by the City Council, so that's, that, that two to be determined in there. Shared trash containers, no, no change proposed, will be enforced as part of the site plan review. Obtaining all required local, state, and federal permits, even if we didn't say it, he'd have to do it, will be enforced as part of the site plan review. Can you hear me better now? Am I doing better?
Yes.
Okay, good, good, good. Let me see here. Approval of this use permit does not constitute site plan approval, I believe Mr. Moses is clear on that. The proposal is subject to the city's site plan approval process and must meet all applicable city land use provisions. No changes proposed. This was the, this is, this is where they really were, were strict the first time through with this amendment, even stricter than the rezoning. And, and, and Fountains is requesting that this be totally stricken, but what the conditional use permit did say, prior to the issuance of any and all building permits related to future phases, Phase 4, which at that point was a townhome site, as depicted on the submitted plan, the developer must provide documentation to the city in the form of lease agreements and issued certificates of occupancy verifying that 2/3 of the commercial residential components of the entire development, to include phases 1, 2, and 3, have leaseholders at the time of building permit issuance. That's a very strong requirement. Our proposed change is the same as I just went over in the rezoning with you. It's certainly more lenient than that, but it's perhaps a little stronger than, than Mr. Moses agrees with, and I'm sure he'll talk to you about that.
Did the previous slide, I was.
Sure.
Right there, I'd like to read that a minute.
Okay. While staff feels that a separation of the two phases with independent ratios being met makes some sense, it is nevertheless important to keep the current provision intact to preserve some guarantee that the city will see commercial units prior to the entire residential units allowed being built out over Phases 3 and 4, which probably sounds familiar, because that's exactly what I said with the rezoning amendment. The proposed changes are also the same, you've got this one alt, alternate, one alternative that, that really puts everything in order, Phase 1 to Phase 3 to Phase 4, and then you have one more general one alternative, I'll call it alternative 2, or B. Phase 4 may be constructed separately and independent of Phase 3, provided Phase 4 meets its ratios via CUP and ordinance, have no problem with that. However, in those circumstances, shall construction of Phase 4 commence prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy on the commercial structure, building 6, located in Phase 3, as depicted on the conceptual plan dated December 19th, 2019, and entitled exhibit, The Fountains of Pecosin, Phase 1, 2, 3, and 4, a village mixed-use development. Okay. So that's where we are there. And I, I, I should have said this at the beginning, but I've got a handout of this PowerPoint for your use, I should have said that earlier. Okay, so this is Phase 4, I'll move right into Phase 4 and try to make it quick. You've seen the zoning map, that's where Phase 4 is, that sort of yellowish shade. Proposed E conditions, I think that's a run-on. Below are the proposed conditions of the conditional use permit for Phase 4 with staff comments. This is where Mr. Moses, Fountains, wants to do the 50-foot portion of the property, Alpha Street extension. They're proposing to do it as part of Phase 4, okay?
Ask you a question while it's in my head.
Sure.
Is Phase 4 where the first three buildings will be residential and, and the last two commercial, are setbacks affected by now being residential and commercial versus all originally intended residential?
That's a very good question, and it's one that we addressed in our meetings with Mr. Moses early on. The previous concept development plan did not show the appropriate setbacks, we now have the appropriate setbacks shown.
For, for the proposal as well?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so, again, this is a, this is Fountains' proposal is to, to do this as part of Phase 4, and, you know, if the applicant's granted that ability, then it'll become a condition of the Phase 4 conditional use permit. ARB required on all buildings, prior to site plan approval, will be enforced. If the project is, again, this does the same thing as the last permit did, it moves everything back five years. So he has five years from the date of final approval to get this going. Okay, development, so not nearly more than non-dwelling units, I think we've covered that, not gonna be a problem. Shared trash containers will be enforced as part of the site plan review. We did have a comment on the Phase 3 site plan about screening for that, you may have picked that up, we'll take care of that. The applicant shall obtain all required local, state, and federal permits, of course, that'll be enforced as part of the site plan. Approval of the use permit does not constitute site plan approval, Fountains understands that. Residential buildings may be constructed and occupied prior to construction of commercial buildings. Again, staff doesn't have an issue with that happening on each individual phase, but staff does wonder what kind of guarantee will be forthcoming that, that ensures that there are some commercial units interspersed in here and not just residential units. That's really what it all comes down to. I mean, it is, after all, a mixed-use district, so we want to make sure we have, have, have both uses. Okay. Okay, in this language, we've been over before, I'm not gonna go over it again, oh gosh, and, and that's, that's basically the end of my presentation. I know Mr. Moses will want to talk to you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions I can.
Questions will, will I ask you, but I think probably we'll open the public hearing on the first.
Okay.
The first request.
All right.
So if, if anyone would like to. So if, if anyone would like to come forward, which I'm assuming Mr. Moses will. Give us your name.
Robert Moses. Thank you for letting me come forward tonight to kind of describe the update, walking the behind it. Buildings Four and Five were very similar to One, Two, and Three, but that'll put commercial units, a great distance to Whit creek road and Alpha Street, and that looked unfavorable to the bank. I wanted a commercial unit to front either Whit creek or Alpha Street. So we went back and looked at it, felt that it was necessary to move whatever commercial components we had, Building Four and Five, over to Alpha Street on Cleveland. That's how we decided to break the forest and just be able to have ratios independently for people. That's what led to that. The other thing the bank is requiring for me to build, Building Six or the standalone building, is I have to get at least half of the units with leases prior to before they will give you the loan. The bank would much rather I go ahead and begin building the residential components in those spaces because the residential, the residents will drive the business. The, the thing that we've really gotten into right now with just our current tenants. Now, I've got one vacancy in Building One, she could not renew for California. I've got restaurants moving out, but I've got another one coming back in. That's worked out very well. So, but the other thing that I have with respect to Building One is we held off on the parking, but it's going to go on what is above it or the west side, shown here, figure Space One. We held off on that to allow the city, that was a piece of land I own. I still own it, but I gave the city a leaseback so they could bury a green pipe and park the pond in Green Light over to the big pond. I did that in 2013. That pond still hasn't been buried. I need to put those parking spaces in there. Third, Building One. I've got to get on with that, so that's...
Just interject one thing there, Bob, that I think will help you out. I did talk with the city manager about that very issue, and we don't think that's going to pose a problem. We do not think that that parking there is going to pose a problem. So I think we could allow you to have that parking there, that's what I'm trying to say.
Where is that parking at? Which side of that building? Is this right here? Is this right here?
Let me try to use a combination of this and just walk in over there.
I'm going to bring you a pointer next time.
You know, it would be nice if it worked, but...
There you go.
Yeah.
A light set. You just got to stand closer to it, I guess. But anyway, that's where we are. So you would need that really right now for Building One, you're saying?
Yeah, right, right. I, for Phase Four, I've got, let me explain Phase Four. Buildings Nine, Ten, and Eleven are three-story townhouses, bottom level, projects, restored. That's the tallest I can make them and not...
Talking about those partners?
Yes, thank you. Nine to Eleven, townhouses. Buildings Seven and Eight are two-story office buildings, just like we have in North County. Other places come over the reservoir, there's the tobacco gun store, whatever, kind of that, is two-story commercial buildings by Dennis and Philip Duncan. Those have gone very well, we want to duplicate that. What they'll also do is provide commercial units that are at 800 and 850. If it happens to be 1,250, which is the smallest I can make in the other buildings, I'll have a lot more business. With that, a lot of folks have approached for a really small place, who want to do 1,250 square foot, who want something less than 1,000, this will allow them to alter that. In fact, we have 16 in those two buildings, the first floor is seven.
They have elevators? With elevators?
Not required, elevators...
Elevators are not required?
I do not. What I have to do is for, of the North County, underneath the staircase, there's a viewing room, or there's a private room, so that even if I'm down downstairs stairs, they have meetings there. That is code, in some way, they lay down the outdoors and... I won't need elevators, they're two-story.
Second floors, hmm.
Yeah. That's really nice, because that will keep some of the cost down, too. These commercial mixed-use buildings are pretty expensive. Having commercial on the ground floor, residents above, you have to have separate sprinkler system, and also the ceiling of your commercial and the floor of the residence, you have to a lot of fire protection blocking to separate the use groups. It will up the costs of dead building. By separating the use group into just having each building be one use group, that saves a lot of fire blocking and sprinklers. Now, in this case, for those two-story office buildings, I would need, elevators are really expensive. Buildings One, Two, Three, Four, Five, and Six will have all of it. Just imagine like a hotel has two elevators, just got 100, 100 rooms.
No, I was just, I...
And a, and a very expensive...
I was just thinking about the type of business that would go on the second floor in a modern building like this.
Oh, these would be all offices, there would be an office, there would be a restaurant and a business, so we'd have to leave under, maybe on the bottom floor, six. Very little chance I don't get any one, especially a restaurant back on...
No, no.
On Street, it's been very clear, very well. I mentioned the pre-leases that are required for Building Six, requiring to get the loan start building it. So the, the bank is happy for me to go ahead and proceed with residential construction because I can't get a lease on that to, I have the certificate of occupancy. What I've talked with Ken Summerset about, this may go well with, with current discussion about imposing something that'll make sure that the, the construction is, is built on building the residential, I just don't build the residential units in the commercial, is that I go ahead, while I'm building the, I give the number of pre-leases, I can go ahead and start building the commercial building, number Six, all Six. And I've, I've got at least the residence started. I know that'll be, the bank will be happy with that.
If a commercial, are you targeting for that?
Offices for Six.
Six.
Yeah, I would like it to be all offices, offices, but I'm pretty sure I won't get a restaurant, someone's going to want to do that.
Is that a two-story building as well?
No, it's a, it's a three-and-a-half floor.
Oh, three-and-a-half, okay, so...
Six is the same as Building One, but it's all commercial.
Okay. So similar to One? Idea?
Yeah, it's, it'll look identical to whatever, maybe it'll be a drive-through.
Good luck.
I just wanted to clarify that the pre-lease is for Building Six. You think those, while Building Three and Four are being constructed, or?
Building Four and Five, it's exactly what happened with Building Four. I did not have any commercial tenants, and as soon as I started building it, they came out of the woodwork. That's exactly what's going to happen when I start breaking ground under this base.
Well, then, it, in other words, it's possible, and I'm not talking to you, but it is possible that the building number Six would be built sometimes, sometime after the construction of Buildings Three and Four, is that? Or Three and Four, the two commercial, I mean, the two residential?
You're talking Four or Five?
Four and Five.
Yes, sorry, it's okay.
My fault, my fault, my fault. Got my numbers next to...
There's a very good chance that it would come out of the ground with the four pre-leases of, even though there's 12, 12, yeah, 12 units in there. It's just, again, it depends on the bank looking, what the, the bank is doing is looking at phase by phase. So Building One has to support everything that's out there right now, which has been tough, because a lot of the construction that we've done out of pocket has been over in Phase Two to get into the rest of the property, but it's not generating any income. Our expenses to our income ratio is really out, it's out of whack right now. We knew we had to build Building Two immediately. But once we get Building Two, and so once I get Building One stable, which has replaced this one commercial tenant, this eleven, I'll get along the way to build Building Two, and then Building Three, and then I'll treat Building Two and Three as standalone. The bank has looked at the numbers, the numbers look really good. They always look good once Building One, Two, and Three are operational. It gives me a lot of free cash flow each year, allows me to do a lot of the construction. What we're trying to do is just get the first three buildings. I could have got the first two buildings up since sixteen, but they're in pretty good shape. Bank disappeared on me. Bank murders, and now I don't know if they know where the coast is. When I started this, it was a couple of months, and there was a lot of board members here in town, and then... Starting this, then they got bought out. Then a year and a half, they got bought out again, and I had finished the bank, I had finished Building One, they had already had two bought by Alt Murders, and, and it was, it's been agonizing, just to say that. We've got to move back on board now, they're very, they're very anxious for me to get the sublease, build on Building One.
The condition that Building Six would be done as part of Phase Three before you...
Well, it's possible. I would like, quite frankly, I've got people ready to move into townhouses and take a small, one small offices in Phase Four. So that's why I want to build them independent. I've, I've got to do what the market will bear, otherwise the bank is not going to just let me go out there and start building. That, that's been the issue. The, the issue I've got is, the only comp, there's no other comp for mixed-use in the place, and this is, bumped up against this from day one, so the only absolute numbers. If I've got, if I've got one vacancy, I, I see the 10% vacancies, so I got to build back up, and, and so this is just agonizing. I end up with two vacancies, and that's another, their numbers are based on nothing over 10% vacancy. That's why I need to add in a second bill, I, I do want to do...
In my head. So this amendment then will allow you to start on Phase Four now?
Right.
Before doing Two, Three, Four, Five, or Six, is that correct? So you'll be doing residential, strictly residential right now, which is Phase Four. Is that where, where you're going with this?
There's residential for Phase Three, too, but yeah.
In the residential phase, Buildings Four and Five are all residential apartments.
Right. Two and Three?
Two and Three are the same as Building One, commercial on the ground floor, being occupied. Site plan's already approved for these two.
But, I mean, they're not built, correct?
That's correct, we just cleared...
Right, well, that, that's what I'm, Building One is the only one building out there, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, working on your occupancy on One, but then the goal for you now is to go to Phase Four and complete the residential townhouses, is that correct?
I would like to start Phase Four, and I want to start on Building Two, Building Three, I want to get Phase Two built. Phase Two is already approved, except the, I've got to get right where Ken Summerset because the code change on the construction for the building.
But didn't you say the bank wanted you to start on residential, and then Phase Two, I guess, will be commercial with residential over, is that correct?
Yeah, just what I like, I like, I like to start...
Phase Two is already approved, clearly cleared.
Go ahead, press on with Phase Two, which is Building Two.
So you're, you're starting that now, then?
Yep. Yeah, I did clear it out of pocket, I just can't do all the site work out of pocket, but I need to buy it.
Before you construct these buildings, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Which buildings are...
Two and Three, before those buildings are constructed?
Building Two, I want to get done.
Where you do the residential, before you do the residential townhouses?
Yes, I'm, right. The bank will lend me money also to do Phase Four, with, with the interest I get, pre-leases for the portion. But that's, that's not on, not in the conversation just yet with the bank in terms of closing out, we will...
Then Four, then you'll go into the townhouses, I mean?
Yeah, I'm going to do what I have people ready to occupy. That's all the banks will lend me money, I have.
So, okay, so you're going to start on Two, then you're going to build Three?
I want to do this, yeah.
And then you're going to jump over to Four, Phase Four, and do those three residential townhouse buildings?
I still have the same interest as I'm finishing up Building Two, because I've got it down for Phase Four, I'll call that Two.
Okay, okay.
And I think, again, I've got Buildings One, Two, and Three operational, and that's what I should build, I don't have a problem with that. Those three properties, we're going to put out considerable cash flow, have debt coverage, debt service, or construction allowance for Building Four. What they're concerned right now, I usually probably call money to...
So your intention is do One, Two, Three, Four, Five, before you jump over to Back?
My, my, my goal is to do Two and Three.
Right.
And I still have the interest in, in Phase Four for townhomes, I want to purchase townhomes and put the smaller, I got pre-leases for the smaller units, so I can go in still. I'll start those.
You do Four and Five?
Yes. I'll just keep moving around the pond as the bank allows me to do that. Bank is pretty much the one who's going to get whether they give you the loan, just based on interest. So intent to move in, I get those. I have some statistics, I cannot sign a residential lease for anyone until the certificate of occupancy. What I plan to do for the commercial buildings is only spell out, and then, ten, sign a lease, they think they're building for it. I have the whole subcontractors to finish out, the interior of it to meet whatever their businesses. That's why I get the certificate of occupancy, that won't be granted until the business has had the final inspection of Ken Summerset. I'm not here to call.
Can't even lease the residence, residential above it, until you have a CO on the...
No, I can, I can, I, I will finish, so, so what we decide to do is that Ken will, as long as I've got the fire safety net, for the commercial space, even if it was just left out, there were sprinkler systems in, the fire alarms were, then he will permit residents to move in upstairs.
Oh, okay, that's true.
And so, so even though you look through the commercial space and go, wow, obviously you can drive over, you'll see sprinklers and so forth. That's how, that's, that's how we did, what we're planning to do Building One, within the, the board's house. I expect it to happen on Building Two, right now, they're all in town.
Commercial? You don't have anybody interested in that?
I have a Building Two now, but that's the way, it's pretty difficult to get.
So would you anticipate finishing up Four before starting on Phase Three? Are you just kind of seeing the phases, completing Four, and then...
The, the key part about Phase Three is Buildings Four and Five on the pond, because those are down floor, two-bedroom apartments, and one-bedroom apartment. Those are, I'm going to have people wanting those, and want to bring that to the bank, then we'll say, go to the... I don't want to kind of just say we're choice, we're going to win, and what, the order of the trifecta is, I'm hesitant to say what my current interest is.
Infrastructure, as you're jumping around these phases, how, how...
Thank you for bringing that up. So we cleared Phase Two, when I start Building Two, and I'm going to go ahead and do all the site work for Phase Two. So it'll be stubbed out for Building Three, so when the bank says go to Building Three, I can start at Phase Two.
Part of this provision for approval?
You changing amendment?
Uh, Phase Two, no, it's already approved, Phase Two's already approved, I just had to...
What are you doing?
I mean, in place, where the infrastructure is in place before... Start on another building. I mean, I understand it's approved, but...
But I don't know that it's in place.
I mean, it has to be in place, right, for you to be able to access all these different areas as you jump around, even though the site plan is approved, or the, is it, is there a requirement that that?
Where that ordinance requirement comes in, it's separate from commercial. So in other words, what, when you have residential units separate from commercial, that wasn't the case in phase one and two, because you had a mixed use building, you had commercial on the ground floor. So, so that condition didn't come into play on those. It does come into play on three and four. Now, if he's gonna go ahead and do residential on phase four, that means he's gonna have to do the Alpha Street extension.
Well, he's talking about phase four, not until...
Who has to do all the infrastructure on phase four?
After two and three. So is all the infrastructure there right now for two and three?
No, I got to do that. I'm talking for the long term.
But I'm saying, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say, is there a stipulation that that infrastructure is in place before bumps to, um, nine, ten, buildings nine, ten, and eleven, which is phase four?
Infrastructure will have to be in place, yeah.
So that's part of this provision, is what I'm asking you.
Phase four.
This change in amendment, this amendment change provides that that infrastructure is in place when you jump to another building, is what I'm saying.
Well, I was trying to separate them a little bit, and I was talking mostly about Alpha Street, and, and the comments, what came up. But yeah, I mean, if he's gonna do phase four, part of the site plan, and part of the CO is gonna be everything, be installed in there and working. What I was trying to do with this is prior, currently, right now, phase three and phase four are tied together, in which case, all of the infrastructure has to be in all over phase three and phase four for him to do anything. What he is saying, what I think he's saying, is that phase three, he would do all the infrastructure for phase three, or if he does phase four first, he'd have to do all the infrastructure for, he would do it phase by phase. So, if he's gonna do phase four first... My initial concern was, what guarantee do we have that will get any commercial use at all? He's told you about his plans for residential, the commercial is out there somewhere. Uh, that was, that was my initial concern. But yes, he'll have to build all the infrastructure. He won't get site plan approval, or he won't get CO, he'll get site plan approval, but he won't get CO to all the infrastructure.
And that concern was originated from council many years ago, which is why that condition was originally part of the CUP.
Right.
When it was approved back in twenty thirteen, or whatever.
Right. The reason that flows, you know, is I was using building six, the all commercial building in phase three, as part of our ratio to justify townhouses and all the, the school. They wanted me to go ahead and lease up our building six, uh, to get it ready for, uh, commercial tenants to be able to bring their subs in with the building for a bit and finish it. Did that, did that level, we were gonna start getting townhouses in place. So that, that'll be split, and, and, quite probably the banks in the life.
Well, I'm... And the townhouses are gonna be accessed from Alpha Street?
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes, so, so I will put the road in, parking spaces, the curvy gutter, with the whole, whole phase, all at once. Same thing when I go into phase three, is to crack that open, and I'm gonna go all the way over to Whit Creek, and all the curvy gutter.
I, I guess that's what I'm, I'm trying to understand, is that all that will be done, you're not gonna be riding through gravel roads and dirt roads trying to get to a building that's been a hundred percent complete, and you got residents there complaining because they gotta drive through mud and dirt and...
What we'll do is, uh, put everything in there, except for the last coat of asphalt, it was typically done on construction.
And that's part of the provisions?
That's just...
I, I know, but I understand.
I got to be, I got to be seven control, rose to seven control, that's what drives that. They don't need to put any stipulations, that's, that's the permanence, that's the laws. I mean, that's, we don't need to put over restrictions.
I, I understand that, I mean, I, I do. I was just trying to access through this development, and, and, and understanding that at least the minimum, uh, infrastructure's put in. I mean, I know the final doesn't go on till the very end, but I wanted to understand, in my mind, that that is part of the provision, that as these buildings are built, and you navigate through these streets, that these streets are, are actually, they've been put in, they're not just mud and gravel.
They have to go in.
Um, Mr. Moses, one of the, uh, intents of the village commerc- commercial, um, if you could, um, I guess it addresses the quality of life for the residents and the users of, of the, um, village commercial entity, to create a pedestrian-friendly environment, cooperation of sidewalks, bikeways, street trees, and street furniture. Have you, have you incorporated any of those elements into the overall design, um, assuming it, when you're finished, build out?
Yeah, with that sidewalks, uh, around the pond.
Around which pond? This, which pond?
Uh, the J Pond is the...
It's a city pond. So you, you're going to do that as part of the...
I'm, I'm going to go to pond area.
Okay. So, so the question is to you, as the developer of what, what are you doing with quality of life aspects to, to create the, one of the intents of village commercial, um, to have those elements? And I, I guess when I explain if you've got any of those sidewalks, bikeways, street trees, and furniture, again, it's that quality of life.
That's the landscaping, sidewalks. How'd you bike, I don't know what bikeways you had in the...
Don't have a, a theme right now of, of, of creating this whole thing as, as a, as a cohesive unit, uh, iterating, uh, once done all phases, the interconnectedness of this village commercial, so that you've got one unit, that's why we approved it in one totality, or we're looking at it one totality. I, 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 I'm seeing lots of little separate buildings, I'm not seeing other elements.
It's gonna be tough for me to describe anything else in one, I'm moving aside, but thanks for... Exactly what all I'm supposed to do in terms of what they want to tell me, whatever you're reading from.
Yeah, it's, it's part of the ordinance, which created the village commercial separate zoning district, I guess. By creating the mixed use, that there's the other, other elements that we're trying to establish.
Doesn't mean that common area?
Because I'm seeing a lot of, a lot of, um, independent, independent buildings, like
islands surrounded in asphalt, are really, you know, as a consumer or a protect, potential customer, I can see where the, the appeal of the townhome that were, that are lower density and have some aesthetics overlooking the pond, versus the other side of these buildings, you know, uh, two, three, four, and five, you know, what, what are you providing for those residents in terms of a, a village commercial area? The fountains, what unifying units have you got there?
Well, buildings, all of them can walk out to the pond, and walk around.
So the pond is your, is, is your only feature that you're...
That common area is there too, um, they just have a big old town. The little island area up front, building two. Have sidewalks for walking around, um... Got landscape, there are trees that'll grow up, and we'll plant, plant the trees to do the landscape. The park took the building down lines.
What were the architectural review guidelines for, I'm sorry, what were the architectural review guidelines for, for this village commercial? Okay. Did they have comments on that? On, when it went through the review board, did they have comments, or has it already gone through the review board for the ARB?
Yeah, it's, building one, two, and three are already passed.
And then the remainder would after, as part of the site plan?
The, the other reason why it looks as way as if there's a fire safety, our truck has to be able to get around buildings. And that's why buildings, uh, buildings one and three have a ramp around, and that's why buildings four and five, your, uh, the drivelanes can get, uh, reached to the pond gardens, or they can have visibility to all sides of buildings four, five, and six.
If I can just go a little bit, a little different direction, I have a quick question for Mr. Moses, a quick question for the city. Um, I'm looking at, well, it happens to be the eighth chart, this chart's been in a number of times, talk about parking spaces. The way I read this, there's a fairly significant shortage of parking spaces in phase three, and we're making up for it in phase four, which is a long way away. Now, am I reading that correctly? It says here the required parking spaces in phase three is a hundred and eleven, and provided is a hundred and one. That's almost a ten percent deficit. And it looks to me like we're making up for them in phase four, which is a long walk from building three, four, and five.
The, uh, the ratio is one per two hundred square foot of one parking space.
I'm, I'm just looking at the chart, I'm not trying to figure out the math.
Yeah, so that's, that's a pretty hefty debt to me.
I understand that, but that's what the code says, I guess. And so, you know, if that's what the code says, are we authorizing something that doesn't have enough parking spaces? Now, I would hope that that would be looked at in the site plan, because, I mean, that's, that's code. My other question, which is completely different, and is probably way off the chart, but what the heck, it's only nine o'clock, but let's start another conversation. Why do we have a five-year time limit? If the gentleman owns the property, he got, he got approval of this thing years ago from the city, why are we giving him a time limit? Doesn't, to me, it doesn't, I, I'm not talking about you in particular, because I think we do that to a lot of folks, and I could think of cases where there might be some, but I can't understand why there's a time limit in a case like this. He owns the property, or he's making payments on the property, I'm not sure which it is.
I think the concern was that, uh...
And I mean, I wouldn't hear then either, but I think the concern was that we go ahead and get something built here.
That was the sense of alacrity, now, of course, that...
Yeah, but I, but say, he owns the property, he's paying taxes on the property, you know?
It's in my best interest.
It's in yours, I'm, I'm talking about when the, when the city puts a date on there, and I, I, I'm not talking about your case in particular, because I've seen it in others. You know, if I want to do something to my property, the city doesn't come and say, you, you've got two years to do this, if you can't do it, you gotta come back and ask us again. I, I, I don't understand that concept. Now, that may not be a subject for tonight, that may be a subject for you all to think about another time, but I don't understand why we do that, in a case where a man owns the property and he's paying for it.
I don't know how to answer that question, Mr. Travis, it's up to tell you that when city council looked at this, they felt it appropriate to place a time limit.
I understand that, that maybe it's...
That's about the only good answer I can give you. I know that's not really answering the question.
I should've asked that when we, when we had his other, I didn't think to.
Speaking of bills, the residential square footage is twenty-four thousand square feet in phase three. You said it's one per two hundred square foot of parking, is that...
For the commercial.
For the commercial.
What is it for residential?
It's two per unit in residential.
Two per unit, bec- uh, okay.
I'm just reading it off the chart, I'm not, I'm not justifying the math on the chart.
Has that been taken into account now that the residential and the commercial are being flipped and all, because it really...
Well, I mean, they've all been taken into account in, in total, because...
Total.
Because that's what would be expected at the end of it.
I'm like, Bill, if part of that's being...
I'm not sure that's what we're going up with or not, but, you know.
I was just saying, if part of that is being taken up in phase four, like he says, that's a long haul to get to...
I looked at three and four together, uh, and, and ultimately I added all the parking for the entire development. Plus, and, and he does, I mean, that's how I looked at it.
I think the way you got tables in there, the way you did the walling is the parking to the right of building four, will provide parking to phase three, but we counted it in phase two.
Yeah, and those parking spaces you're adding in phase one, too, that, that's another thing to figure out as well.
Sure, phase one, uh, which, so, they're there, there may not be accounted on the right side of the pond.
And I know that when we looked at your phase three site plan, we, uh, I, I think we were okay with parking on that, if I recall.
How many units are in, residential units are in phase one? Did you tell me?
Just eight.
Eight, just eight residential units?
There's a total of sixty over the entire, sixty over the entire, which would, which would be a hundred and twenty spaces plus five handicap spaces.
Uh, I was just looking at building one, because you said you were having an issue with parking it just for that building anyway, so I was wondering, how many residential units?
It's just for the residents, the residents have dedicated parking.
Oh, okay. So is the commercial issue?
Yeah, this is just for the restaurant, and the, and the businesses, Friday night, so at least by, a hundred, a hundred square feet.
Good line, mhm.
Have any other questions, anybody else?
Did you have anything else, just to note something that you want to hear?
All, like, to our attention, or?
We can ask you if we have something, but, uh, we do have this request, uh, we've had the public hearing, so I'm gonna close the public hearing on this one. Second thing on our agenda here, and, uh, we, we can ask this further if you'd like to, it seems like we've done a lot of discussion on it, but, uh, I'll just ask, is anyone prepared to make a motion?
Well, I, I would certainly say, and again, maybe I'm the wrong guy to do that time like this, but, um, as I said, the gentleman, he, he offered something, I guess, about six years ago, when this was initially proposed, and it was opposed, it was approved by the city. Uh, he's not making any substantive changes to the program, he, you know, he got some maneuvering here and there, but there's no substantive changes, uh, and it's been reviewed by the city staff, and he's gonna have to have site plan, so I, I personally think, think that, uh, we would be wrong to deny the gentleman something that he wants to do, and something that we have essentially approved, we, the city, not we, the planning commission. So I make a move, we, uh, we approve it as written.
All right, so that's the first, uh, his first request, which is the second item now on the agenda. You're making a motion to accept it?
I have a question. Can I have a question?
Um, sure.
With the motion on that?
Um, obviously, if this amendment is approved, then it extends, it goes the date forward, what, another year, is that correct? Is it five years? So, if Mr. Moses comes back to us this time next year with another amendment, then it's gonna throw it forward again. So I mean, is there any, any provision for trying to get this project completed or not, or is it just open, basically open-ended?
Well, I think that was the reason for the initial deadline, is to try to get the project. But, I mean, it is what it is, I mean, it's what we've got now. I mean, the city council can choose to, uh, oppose a sooner date. I, I mean, you know, they can use that, they can say, no, we, we want to, to make it two years, for three years. I mean, they can do that. But, I mean, the proposal as now, uh, the way it is, it would boot it to five years down the line.
Five years is a long, long ways looking down the road economically, not, you know, with the...
Right.
Climate, the political climate that we have right now, and what may happen to our economic climate as we move forward, five years is a, is a...
I don't think we can be concerned with that, though, really. I mean, can we?
I mean, if, if the planning commission wanted to make the deadlines...
I'm not trying to do, I'm just trying to understand that every time an amendment is approved, it does extend bringing this to a... that every time an amendment is approved, it does extend bringing this to a close. So I was just wondering how many extensions, so to speak, are we prepared to continue to do? And again, like I said, that's all political, economic climate.
And that's the reason I asked that question earlier. And I don't want to belabor a point, but my point is, I understand your point. It's pretty valid, but it's his property. He's paying taxes on it. He's probably paying the mortgage on it. He wants to wait 10 years. It's money out of his pocket, essentially. I don't, I don't think we should, I understand what you're saying, but it doesn't bother me.
And it's to his advantage to get the thing going along.
It is to his advantage to get it done. It absolutely is.
That's why I say I don't.
The planning commission could recommend there be no time limit at all.
I don't know if that's, if that's required in code. I never, I didn't go that far. So I don't, I would have no problem with that, but I'd have to ask somebody to research whether we're changing something that's.
It wasn't originally a timeframe on it, was it?
Yes, it was five years.
Five years.
And I see that in a lot of CUPs, so I don't know where that comes from.
You see it in a lot of CUPs.
And if it does, I think we ought to address where it comes from, not.
But what you've got to also be aware of is that the, there's a portion of state code that was originally construed to address back in 2006, that unless there's a set time limit by City Council, has potentially pushed the football forward. I think the latest iteration, 2021 to 2022, they've been pushing this deadline back for validity of Platts and site plans back every, ever since 2006. So who knows, who knows how the state code's going to look. But we could put a time limit on it. And if we put a time limit on it, it supersedes the way the state code is written. If we put a time, then it expires at that point.
I understand that, and I think we'll just leave that go at this point in time.
So we have another question. Thank you, Heather.
Yes, so I think if we do have it, the motion has been proposed as written. So one thing I don't know if we had any resolution on is whether or not there is a guarantee that there will be some commercial built instead of just residential on one phase plus residential in another phase. And then there's not necessarily a guarantee that rest will be built. And I think that Lee had a great point about this being a village commercial. This is, you know, the intent of this is to have, you know, not just two islands of residential. So do we want to ensure that there is some guarantee? And I think that staff had proposed a couple of options to integrate those guarantees without, possibly without being too prohibitive.
It is less prohibitive than the prior condition. I'll put it that way.
I'm sorry, I, do you speak up?
It's less prohibitive than the last condition that was approved with the rezoning. It's less prohibitive than that, but it's still, you know. First, my question has been, what guarantee do we have that there'll be any commercial ever as part of this development? And that's why I proposed those conditions.
So for me, any, any motion would have some sort of verbiage in there.
Wally, can you put up the tax parcel map? We've been talking phases, but the provision is for tax parcel 27, Tac 9, Tac 2. And I don't know how that correlates to which phase Mr. Moses wants to do.
Okay, well, let's see here. Okay, that's the maps. Let me.
Aye. Phase One and Phase Two, we've approved the site plan for that, okay?
Right.
That shit is pretty much underway. Phase Three, this is the area that's got Building Six, Building Four, and Building Five. Two residential, one commercial. This is Phase Four over, sorry, right here, which has the residential in the rear and the commercial up front. Again, this is about 66, 67% residential, and so is that.
But which parcel is 27, Tac 9, Tac 2? And which parcel is 27, Tac 18, Tac 2? Because the first motion on the table is rezoning those two particular parcels.
Yes, and that's those two right there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a request by one member to change the verbiage to include. Yes, that is going to indicate that there will be not just all residential. All right, but this is Phase Three now. We're dealing with.
Well.
It's clarified by Commissioner.
Under the rezoning, if this helps, staff recommended the following language for Condition Six. I'll just read it out again. Phase Four may be constructed separately and independently of Phase. Be provided Phase Four meets its ratios via CUP. However, in those circumstances, shall Phase Four be constructed prior to the issuance of a CO on the commercial structure Building Six located in Three, as depicted on the conceptual. That is the least restrictive, I would say, of the two conditions because the first condition said Phase Four would be before Phase Three, Phase Three would be before Phase Four. It's pretty obvious that he's going to kind of skip to Phase Four.
And does it have to be a certificate of occupancy? I think there was an email chain going around.
I don't know that it has to be. I could, we could say that Phase, I mean, Building Six. Building Six gets built, that it's constructed.
Right, right.
May not have COs because there may not be anybody yet to go in there. But at least it's built.
Yeah.
And meets all building codes.
Yep.
But, but it's built. And then Phase Four, presumably, because we're not really concerned with it if he does residential before commercial in each phase, he could go back in Phase Four and do the residential before commercial there. Another option that I didn't even really think about is that instead of the Phase Six and Phase, Building Six in Phase Three, we require him to do the commercial in Phase Four. I mean, that's another way to look at it, too, I suppose. It does affect the motion for the rezoning.
I'm sorry, it did or didn't like?
It does because there is something mentioned about the, about that in the rezoning. There's that, and there's, I think it's in Phase Three also. I think it's at all three phases, to be honest with you.
Got a motion now on the, on the table here. What are we going to do with it?
Either have a second, or we have a motion to make a change.
Can you make a motion to make a change to a motion?
Nobody seconds it. You can make another motion.
Okay, okay.
I will withdraw my motion if Commissioner Emmett will make a motion.
All right, can we do that?
Well, since we haven't had a second, I should be able to do that.
I think you should be able to, okay. All right, so Bill is withdrawing his motion. Would you make a motion?
Now, this may not be the most articulate motion, but I would move to approve the re, pending verbiage at either the commercial building on, in Phase Three, built prior to residential in Phase Four, or that the commercial building in Phase Four be built prior to residential in Phase Three.
Now, are there three commercial buildings in Phase Four? Are there three commercial buildings in Phase Four? Two commercial, okay, so you want to say that two commercial buildings?
Yeah, you could do either, either one, as long as commercial and not the certificate of occupancy, but just be built in one of them.
All right, okay, yeah.
You're pretty clear on that.
I think I'm pretty clear on that. If I'm not, I'll call you.
Yeah.
But I think I'm pretty clear on that.
So Angie has made a motion. Second to her motion.
I'll jump back in in a second.
Okay.
I want my name in the minutes.
All right.
Okay, I hate to be, I hate to upset the apple cart, but there's one other thing here. Prior to issuance of the CO or boundary line adjustment, that needs to stay site plan approval. I can't, I can't approve. Yes, number three.
We can strike that one. So the issue with that, because when you vacate the property lines, another bank group will come in. That was the issue we had. We couldn't give a concrete view of factors because the property lines are being vacated prior to construction. If I had the property line there, I could go get company-wide to fund the construction. And then, after it was CO, terminate with the other company under mortgage and then vacate the line. We don't have to do that.
Okay, yeah, but I can't approve a site plan with the buildings straddling the property line. That's the problem.
Just get rid of that.
Okay.
So let me understand again your motion. You're basically saying that before all of the residential can be completed, there has to be COs or there have to be completion of commercial buildings. Is that correct?
Yes, not necessarily COs, but at least a completion of the building.
And I mean, they should be in a condition to receive a CO upon, you know, lease, people going in. In other words, they should be in a condition to be leased. Maybe they don't have a CO, but they should be in that condition.
Right, in other words, everything is done, your electrical's done, your, your. Everything is ready to go. The tenant just comes in and does their build-out to get a CO, correct?
And one way you could define the construction of the commercial at all is that Ken walks in and sees that the fire alarms are working and the sprinkler system has passed a test. And he says, now the building is safe. Those, the fire alarm and the sprinkler system being installed way early, they have to be tested way early before you can start. Do you trim out or any of the drywall?
So there would be no drywall? In other words, you're saying there'd be no drywall, there'd be no ceiling, you're just talking about open stud walls, but.
Right, because the company has, the company or the tenant is going to do all that based on the wall to lay it out. That's typical commercial, commercial.
The perimeter is not done either? The perimeter drywall of the, of the space is not?
Not the commercial, no, because they're going to come in and put outlets where they want to put outlets and switches where they want to put switches and run. So, or TV, things like that. If I put it up, they're going to rip it out.
Karen, could we, could we get you to read?
Yeah.
What you have and what you, all right, let's let Karen read this to us.
All right, the motion is to approve it contingent upon either. Prior to commencing with Phase Four, or? Phase Four.
Yeah, prior to Phase Three. I mean, and he's going to do Phase Four first.
All right, let's think of the way to phrase it. Okay, contingent on either the commercial building in Phase Three being built before commencing the next phase, Phase Four, or vice versa?
Yes, yes, yes.
Vice versa.
Okay.
About parking and how that all fits in to require parking that this motion is covering. How do we ensure that?
Site plans.
So that, yeah, would be something.
It's all looked at as part of the site plan.
Absolutely. It'll cover the site plan.
It'll also address some of the sidewalks and landscaping, too.
One other question about the motion, because I know y'all talked about it. Are we ass, are we making this motion to approve also?
Number three, yeah, 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 Mr. Moses.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. So now we're ready to vote, Karen.
Okay, Commissioner Deaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Grebel?
Aye.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, moving on to the next request. It's a request by Fountains of Pecosin LLC to amend the terms of a conditional use permit for property known as Zero with Creek Road. Those in Tax Map Postles Number 27-9-2, 27-18-2, and 27-1-87, Zoned VC Village Commercial. Okay, so we'll, we'll open the public hearing on this now. Mr. Moses probably said all you want to say. If there's anything you need to add on this one, if it's okay with you, we'll, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing because you're the only one that's going to speak on it if anybody does. And the planning commission will take this one under consideration.
And here, if you agree that Alpha Street off the Phase Four, the only thing you really need to do is, under Condition Number Nine, add the same language you just did to the rezoning.
That would be acceptable.
Because if he does Phase Four, he's going to need access off Alpha Street. I mean, it would have to be Alpha Street.
We're doing Phase Three right now. We'll get to Phase Four. He's definitely going to have to build it from Phase Four. If he does Phase Four before Phase Three, you'll have to build Alpha Street.
All right, so with, with that additional verbiage, is anyone prepared to make a motion up this one?
I would to accept this.
Recommended, I guess, yeah.
Recommend this, yes, thank you. Contingent upon this same verbiage as the previous zoning change request.
Do it, striking number one?
Well, yeah, he's striking number one. That, that was his proposal. So basically, we're agreeing with his proposal.
So with, with that additional verbiage, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Thank you.
Commissioner Emmett? Would you read the motion to me again, please? That would be to accept it, basically the same as the last one, the commercial building in Phase Three, or Vice versa.
Okay, Karen.
Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Deaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Grebel?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, and the final request is a request by Fountains of Pecosin LLC for a conditional use permit for property known as Zero with Creek Road, Pecosin Tax Map Postle Number 27-1-87, Zoned VC Village Commercial. If there's anything, we'll open the public hearing.
Here, except for the same.
I'll open the public hearing, and you don't wish to come forward? Close it under consideration.
I'm sorry, Wally, what were you saying?
I said the same condition under Number Eight, the same language we've already adopted for the rezoning.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion on this request?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the conditional use permit for Phase Four contingent on verbiage as stated in the previous.
Second?
Second.
That was Greg. Commissioner Grebel? Commissioner Deaver?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you very much.
This will go to the city council on the 24th of February.
Okay, and, and of course, we voted to recommend, and they'll make the final call on them. Uh, thank you. Okay, so that concludes the public hearing items, and we'll move to communications and correspondence. I guess Wally would be the man.
Yeah, uh, we, uh, you'll notice in the minutes that we still hadn't gotten to the planned unit development stuff, because we had some other stuff come up, but hadn't forgotten about it. And we're going to do some side work. Lastly, uh, Ms. Schreiber, I believe, got a letter from Gene Hunt. I don't know if you want to read it, or you want me to read it. I'll be glad to.
I, I don't mind reading it.
Okay, sure.
Okay, it says, Dear Chairwoman Schreiber, and this is dated January 23rd. As you may be aware during council directives at the January 13th, 2020 city council meeting, Councilman Green brought up for discussion the idea of amending Article 11.3, Architectural Control Districts and Review Board of City Zoning Ordinance to eliminate the Architectural Review Board, ARB, and to assign the duties of the ARB to the zoning administrator. Following council discussion, there was a general consensus to continue discussion of this idea, as well as referring this proposal to the planning commission for consideration and recommendation. On behalf of council, I am requesting that the commission take a look at the proposed change and the specific ordinance changes which would be required to implement it. Should the change ultimately be one that council would support, thank you for working this into your work plan. Over the next few months, we look forward to hearing back from you. And as signed, W. Eugene Hunt Jr., Mayor of City of Pecosin.
Basically, the, uh, the zoning administrator would act as the ARB. So, I think no change will be fairly easy, because we'll just substitute zoning administrator for be some stuff about appointments and all that stuff, and we'll probably. But what I'm thinking is that we could probably whip up a version look at, maybe even by the next meeting, but soon. I mean, because we want to get working on this PUD also. But, uh, so, I mean, that's kind of what I intend to do.
What was the purpose of it? I mean, why, why do they want to do this?
Well, I think the concern is, in the past, I mean, and, and at this point, it's, it's quite a long time of my being here, but apparently there have been some, uh, cases where the, uh, council has not agreed with some of the direction of the. I think this is, I, I'm not aware that we've had any issues since I've been here, and I don't know Dan. I mean, we, we, in fact, we've done most of our. But at any rate, that, that might be a reason to not have the ARB in and of itself, as long as we have the same capacity to look and, and make sure it's going to architecturally fit. I'm not sure. I'm, I'm not really sure.
ARB, they made their recommendation directly to council?
Uh, no, this came up with the, uh, scheduled appointment. I think we've got two ARB members that are. Possibility of not having a board and just that, that was the direction that we've gotten thus far.
So, if you bring this to us next month, would, um, probably give some in some, some direction as to what has, what has stimulated this request?
Yes, absolutely.
If I may just interject, and I do this because I am the person who prepares the agendas and presents to the ARB. The story that I've been told is that initially, when they were formed in the early 2000s, the ARB could be very overzealous with the design standards they would enforce for stuff along with Creek Road and Victory Boulevard. There's some pretty ridiculous examples in the history from, you know, 2003, 2004, 2005. However, they have at least a one or two points in its history come to loggerheads with city council, and one case would in fact be the Fountains of Pecosin. The initial design for phase one was rejected by the ARB as being too massive, but it was eventually overruled and approved by city council, again, the ARB's wishes. However, I will say that, for one, the ARB has mellowed significantly. Its current membership is not particularly stringent, and they haven't met, I think, in almost a year. We have a number of applications for small stuff that I have run through and simply emailed to them, asking, can I approve this administratively? And the answer has pretty much always been yes. So, stuff like replacing trim or repainting on a number of commercial buildings along with Creek Road, I have routed to them, and they've just simply said, go ahead with it, it's fine. But that is the current state of where they are today. They are not a particularly active board.
Pros and cons of that. I mean, with one person making all that dis-
Take up and discuss.
It also is the case that they don't have a very strict set of design standards. This isn't Colonial Williamsburg. They have one or two pages of very general rules and a couple of, um, color swatch wheels, and that's pretty much it. The rest is left to the discretion of the board members.
So, we can look forward to something maybe?
Yes, and maybe we need to discuss it a little bit more before we everybody kind of feel comfortable where we are. I mean, if the planning commission feels like it's something that doesn't need to be changed, you know, that, that would be our recommendation, is to keep it the way it is. We, we have the ability to say that, and if that's how we feel, that's what we should say.
So, if there's, if you went as a running official, and it was solely them to make that decision, then would that decision be made at that level, or would it go back to council for their, their approval, if you will, of the decision of the zoning administrator?
Well, as I understand it, it would be the, it would be at zoning administrator's.
At their level to make that decision, one person making that decision.
But
Wouldn't that tell?
You know, the zoning administrator makes a few decisions that run people the wrong way. People always have a, a right to petition the county.
I was just thinking, one person trying to make decis- very limited guidelines, maybe the guidelines need to be tightened up or, or elaborated on, or whatever, so that somebody's calls, I don't know. Some thoughts?
We can be thinking about it.
We'll have a copy of the, uh, the ordinance with us. Next time, we'll bat it around and see what.
Okay, anything else, Wally?
All I got.
Okay, and, uh, Dan.
Nothing else for me this evening.
All right, okay. Well, I'm, and Karen, do you have any announcements that? I know February meeting will.
February meeting, it's going to be Thursday.
Yeah, we'll carry the sign.
Next month, work session first, or you want to think about it?
I think we might need a work session.
Do we need a, on the sign, or do y'all think we need another work session? You'd be asked.
If they would just take the con-
For everything is, I mean, that's up to y'all, if they take the concerns and put them together and.
Yeah, I mean, right now, you postponed it, so I mean, you know.
Can bring them to the.
You just take the concern and bring it back.
Yeah, just do that, and then we can talk about it, because we'll have a, we'll have. I don't really know, do we really need to have another work session? Quite a bit of time tonight on it.
The only thing I would think of is if we would want to, like, toss around maybe different versions, or maybe that's the only reason I could think of.
Up to y'all.
It wouldn't hurt to have the session, work session with it.
I mean, we'll see how many changes we end up making.
Well, if you want to, and if we did have time, if we didn't have so much talk about on the signs, maybe you could talk a little bit about the faster review about the ARB. Maybe talk about the work session, too, so, all right, that's fine. We'll just let Karen, then, uh, maybe, what do you think, 6 o'clock again?
We can tentatively do that, and we'll let you know if it changes.
Tentatively do that, and she'll let us know. Okay, all right, so, um, anybody on that end? I'm going to start down there. Andy, like he's okay.
I'm good.
Good. Greg?
And just happy new year to everybody. Looks like it's starting off to be another busy for us.